Here.
Warren's that?
Here.
Correct.
The Hurcrum County Industrial Development Agency delivers economic incentives to businesses and industry to diversify and strengthen Hurcrum County's tax base and enhance community vitality by supporting job creation, business, and industrial development and community revitalization. We strive to develop the local economy in an organized, sustainable, and environmentally beneficial manner.
Morning.
Morning.
Item number five, where does each be signed numbers?
Yeah, well, it's it's part of best practices. So that'll that what we've decided to do is every resolution will be for will receive a number. It's going to start out, so it's easier for us to track as well. So the first resolution that we're doing today will be zero one two five twenty-two dash or one and go on from there. So the next meeting will be zero two seventeen twenty-two. Better for tracking, better for overall presentation, so. Doesn't need a resolution. We don't need a resolution for numbers on a resolution today to discuss a resolution.
Okay, item. Item number six, the minutes from the December twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one meeting are in front of you. Those pages one through five, any corrections, additions, deletions, et cetera, et cetera. I need a motion accept and second by Kate, new discussion. On favor, I.
All right.
You have that, Margaret?
Yeah.
All in favor, I?
All right.
Item seven, the financial reports are on you, three, six, and fourteen. Balance sheet check register.
Sure, everything was up to date. We have no outstanding. That both of our all of our small loans and grants and small and other loans have been are up to date. Getting ready to start the new year, receiving their information for the drawdown from the county. Everything's in order. We don't see any any lag in anything. Doing a lot of drawdowns, so you'll see some of the numbers a little high if the money just goes through us. We're going to set that up possibly a little different this year where you see that the company goes into our accounts that comes out of it, with kind of a feed through for a lot of different grants that we receive.
Shouldn't we have our grant money in in this? Is that really distorted?
Yeah, we're gonna we're gonna change that this time.
Makes it nine hundred thousand on both sides.
So but that's the way we have to be in a lot of cases for the county and for say, for example, for the water transmission line we talked about too. But in the county, we're the sub recipient holder, so we do the administration, we do the actual work with the end user. So it's it's just has to feed through that way according to the state. But it's it's okay. It really does help us out too, and it helps us manage the grants a lot better.
For the audit statement, it will still show that it flows through.
Oh, yeah.
So this will well, the internal won't eliminate it and just show it.
Yeah.
We need a motion to accept those financials. New discussion. All in favor, I?
All right.
Close name. Corey, and I'm just going to case you our small business grant with two two two, update there.
All right, so we do have just over four thousand in the account, so there is enough to support an application. And we don't have any active applications at this time. However, I've been speaking with two business owners on that, so hopefully I will receive one in in the near future. All payments are being made accordingly, and there was a annual report that's due for this particular program that's due to Empire State Development that was submitted last week and accepted. Just to make mention on the micro winter prize, there was a final report that was submitted for that program as well. So we're all closed out there. There is a final performance public hearing which Hurcrum County will be taking tomorrow.
So the there's a couple of things that we have to still continue to do with the two 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 program. That's funny, we more than, I think, over five hundred and some thousand into that program. And the senator only gave us, I shouldn't say only, but he started it along with Assemblyman Mark Butler, to give us a total of seventy-five thousand dollars. And even though it's all caught up and surpassed that amount, we still have to report once a year to the state. And also, when we do that program, everyone has to still keep in mind that our loan and grant committee have to approve it as well as Empire State Development. So there's still a process involved in that, and we hope to continue it for a long time. I doubt we'll ever get money to put back in there, Sam's money. It just doesn't happen that way any longer, but we will be going after other grantee to help out small businesses. And we'll talk about that.
All right, item nine, the void vacation.
Yeah, we're concerned because of COVID and some of the issues that happened last year with postponing of vacations and not being able to take our vacations. I know for myself, I was going to go on a trip with some people, and we had to postpone it due to COVID. And not the fact that we were afraid that we were going to get it or the fact that, you know, we had to master things, the fact that we got it, we couldn't get back. Some of these places we chose to go to were up to a level four or five. I can't remember what they were. So what I'd like to do is is to be able, and we can revisit this again next year too, if it's still an issue. But I'd like to be able to transfer twelve days of all of our staff over to to this year, to be able to carry those days over. Just didn't, you know, we were going to take it. Personally, I was taking one in October, and we couldn't go. I think we would just, it would have been crazy to go. I could have been out a month, and I couldn't do that. So that would hurt everything. So there would have, yeah, it would have, truly would have. So and I worry about that. So I'd like to be able to carry over twelve days, and I'd like the the motion to read that.
Why'd you pick twelve days?
It was a consensus amongst the staff.
Okay, county policy is five days.
Yeah, well, we're not the county, like, we don't.
What is our policy?
What is, yeah.
We don't really have, do we have anything right now? Is it five days?
To carry over five days.
Okay, so we want to bump it to twelve because of the vacations. But I think they should change it too for COVID, and I think Department, that's absolutely.
That's how that has to be negotiated through contract.
So I just want to be clear, we we already carry over five for each of you, and you're looking to carry over twelve.
We have the option to. We don't like to carry any days over. We all like to take it, but because of that thing we all call COVID. We had no option this time. You know, you can't take those vacations and do the things that you want to do, and those vacations are all earned.
So, okay, sorry, maybe I'm not understanding. So normally, a given year, we have a policy that allows five days to be carried over.
Yeah.
Okay, so with an anomaly, COVID year, you're looking for twelve each or twelve total?
Twelve each.
Okay.
As a policy, not just individually.
Would that be your policy moving forward or just?
I think we should revisit it next year as well, after we see how this year goes. I mean, we're all here, and she's going to drop everything next month, but then in two months, she could take it all back. And again. Depends how the election's going.
I'm still confused.
Go ahead.
No, no, you first.
The twelve days are because you use them for last year.
Yeah.
We're talking about twenty twenty-two for twenty twenty-two.
Twenty-one for twenty-two to carry over some of those days. We just couldn't get to it.
So if you didn't get. So if you didn't take those five days, so now you want twelve days this year plus the five that year.
No, twelve total.
Oh, totally.
Yeah, not plus the five.
So seven more days.
Yeah, for this year. If we used them, you know, I'm not saying I'm going to take them.
Policy says you don't use.
You lose them.
When you lose them.
Oh, yeah, yeah, after the year.
Or you you lose them at the end of the year.
And we all tried to take them towards the end, but we still have some left over. And I I will tell you how many, I have too many days left over, but I don't care about all of them. But I think it's important that we up it to twelve.
Policy if you retire or be properly noticed to get paid out for any of these vacation.
Yeah.
You do.
So we'll swear that none of the three of us will leave or retire.
No, you have to pay. You can't get paid more over than that, more than each.
No, yeah. Yeah, and we're only looking to transfer those. We couldn't use them all, it just didn't make sense. I would have loved to have taken all my vacation time.
So a little bit of a number sketch. So can you just, so we're really talking about these two.
No, me too.
Well, you said you don't care.
Well, I do really, I want some of my days. I'm not going to get them all. That would.
How many total, can you just, do you know the vacation schedule? How many do you get a year? Do you have any idea? You gotta know, no?
I think that's probably part of the package.
Is that part of the package? All right, so if we don't do, we're we're shortchanging seven days.
Yeah.
There's one, twelve, and you get five.
So seventeen anomaly. Yeah.
All right. I say we do it.
See that a motion?
I I allow them twelve days.
Motion by Dave, second by me.
They earned it.
They're going to do it again next year.
Then they'll review it each year.
Oh, we're not going to, no, it's just this year. Let's hope we don't have to.
In favor?
I.
Any opposed name?
We'll take work here.
I'm glad you know that. I give you all vacation days.
So a lot of companies that have an unlimited amount now. But. So it's a question.
You hear you go over all of it.
Yeah.
Okay, let's move on. I don't know. It's ten, actuarial evaluations on page fifteen seventeen.
Did you sit at the name of this other work place? Right here.
So we've used these actuariales for quite some time now. We need to do a full evaluation of, yeah, full valuation, so it's twenty-five hundred dollars. So we don't have a choice because of the grants and other things that we do. So. It's just another expenditure we have to make. I hate it too. You have no idea, and the guy promised it was still going to happen.
But it has to be done.
It has to be done.
The motion, someone, Kate, Ricky, second wife. All in favor, any discussion? All in favor, I?
All right.
Any opposed? CDVG cares money.
So after many discussions with Victoria and Stacy, and this is later on, but I'll let you know, we did find somebody and hire somebody and bring in them on February seventh. So we decided, and we called Housing and Community Renewal Scott Lamout, and then talked to him. And he thought right away that we should apply for five hundred thousand dollars in cares money to get this application again like we did before. However, we can change the program up a little bit, and we're excited about this. We can help companies up to twenty-five employees and really expand on who we helped before. So but there's a caveat that we have to do it all within a year. And we're holding off a little bit now until we see what the county is going to do. If the county is going to apply for something under this as well, we'll do it together, but we won't wait too much longer, and we'll start applying. But we, I think we should all, we should definitely have a resolution that supports us moving ahead with that, that we're at. Here's grant through the county, we'll be the sub recipient agreement again there or holder there again. But I would like to support the board for that.
Motion. Corey, motion second. Ask Brown.
I have a question. I remember before you were concerned about the capacity of being able to administer the grants. I know you have a new employee, which that takes some time to transition. When do you think the grant would come in as compared to being ready to manage it?
With everything that has to be done, probably a month and a half to two months. So I think we'll have them up and running enough to alleviate some of the pressures from both Victoria and Stacy and continue that moving forward, plus other things that we have come in. So we're going to keep the application process very similar to what we have now, so that won't vary. What will vary is the amount of people that they can have retain or hire or looking to hire. So retention is going to be a big part of this grant, also the size of the award and the amount of employees they can have. Before, our CDBG grant was just up to five owner occup owner working there as well. We're going to change this up a little bit. This is federal money coming through again, the CARES Act with CDVG, and we can open up the policy a little bit more. I and and we can add to this too. So say we hit a couple of nice ones, and we see that we're going to use up this money. We can reach out to Scott Lamout because we had a great conversation with him, and he'll answer it as well.
So capacity wise, you feel confident?
Victoria, do we feel confident?
We are very confident.
Okay.
That is indirect involving the CDBG grant, where the agency can actually draw down my percentage management?
Oh, we'll have an administrative fee inside of that too, yeah. I believe it is twenty percent as well, but I I think we can actually go for twenty-five because it is cares money. But I I don't know, we'll take a look at that too. We're working with Leanne West on this as well.
I only ask because some grants are coming through, especially in the federal, and I'm noticing that that we're taking a look at them. Some of them don't have indirect written into the the budget lines.
Yeah. However, I have to be honest with you, if it was not in this, but it is, that we would probably still look at it because we can help businesses, and that's what we're kind of going to do. So I shouldn't say kind of, we are definitely going to do that.
The motion in the second, we need any further discussion. All in favor, I?
All right.
You close then.
Oh, thank you, guys.
Well, there's our ID application for financial assistance that's the entire.
Well, that's that's huge now.
So that's, no.
One of the result, one of the results from our audit and the software that we purchased to make this flow a lot easier through MRB, we had our application rewritten to to include more of the data. We also had this approved by Tony Hallack, who's on the line, Tony, nod your head so you can get that. And so this is a more precise application, more that outlines what we need additionally moving forward with the new laws and everything put into place. We're going to have an introductory letter now that we put out with it, but it's really thorough on what we need and where we need it, and it flows nicely, lets us really see job counts and who they're planning on there. It talks about our recapture. It really covers everything that we need to move ahead with this. So we're looking to, once again, do a resolution passing this, and this will allow us to start submitting a new application with the new financial assistance.
Motion by Kate, except man, second. Any discussion? Okay, right? Any opposed name?
Thank you very much for that. It does make our job a lot easier as far as getting the data, because now we're asking for a lot of it upfront, which is most important, because it's very difficult sometimes to get from these companies that data after the fact.
All right, let's move to item fifteen, Frank provided South Business Park, there's an issue about the pumping station there. They got flooded out years back. Nineteen?
It was Halloween.
It was Halloween.
Was it twenty nineteen? The Halloween flood was in nineteen? Wow.
That's a bad man.
All right.
Nineteen.
Wow.
So they're, they were a little shorter, John, let's talk about a little.
Well, that's not, that's not so much. What it is, is the fact that they applied, the night of the flood, the gentleman who was in charge from the Village Water Authority got a notice on his phone, because that's what the pump is does. It notifies them if there's an issue, drives over the hill, and the pumping station is gone. And it got swept away in a creek, and some of it was salvageable, some of it wasn't, had to be shipped out. For quite a period of time, there was no pumping station. It sat, we had insurance issues and everything. So after they got all said and done, the total expenses were about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. The community got back from BIMA and other their insurance and other reimbursements, everything, what, sixty-two hundred and fifty dollars? I would like to support them through the IDA and make them whole on that of the six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
I'll move.
Close second, Kate, Ricky, new discussion. All in favor, I?
All right.
Any opposed name? Like you said, John, that keeps us.
Good gesture.
Yes.
It's a lot better.
Or or some other towns.
Yeah. That's good. Thanks.
Item fourteen, this is part, we get, especially gas line extension there as well. Actually, there's no gas there. Trying to do a gas feed in there. John, you want to give some update on what's going on there? Or is any of them?
National grid has been like. It's it's unbelievable. A supervisor called me up last week and said, I'm only calling you so you don't call the Public Service Commission. Let's recontact and senior manager there and said, look, we met with you in May. Everybody's data was to you in August, it's January, and you don't even have it this time. I said, what is going on? They could not give me answers. The track lies with constantly. You just didn't want to make that call. It's not nice. National grid is not, we've had issues with Amazon at HALE and at this park. So what we're told now is that we have a four inch, which I cannot understand why we're doing a four inch. There's a, how many went out on the highway? So there's a ten inch main along five. We're going to plug into it with a four inch service, our new park, and anybody who expands in the front is baloney. They say the pressure is high enough too, but we always hear stories to put in a six inch would be nothing. When when we talk to these people, especially the, I was promised something before Thanksgiving. The gentleman who was doing it left on vacation before Thanksgiving, didn't come back till January, and no one would help during that time. Then he comes back, and he hates to give me the bill because it's a hundred and sixty-two thousand to run that pipe from five all the way back to our cul-de-sac. And I'm like, I told them in September that we would hire a company that they chose and a designer that they chose and had it all done, and they wouldn't allow us to do it. I know in talking with our grant people there that they said they are not, they will support us one hundred percent. So this money that we need to front now, we will get back. So will both anybody who develops in that park, because this is a shovel-ready park, and that's all included. Electric was a nightmare too, but at least that's in now. But I'm telling, both companies, Fountainhead and Pepsi, had to put propane in there. They had to convert everything over, which can be converted back. The added cost has been outrageous, where we had everything in place to move ahead with this.
Wouldn't there have been an engineer's report on how big the gas line would have to be?
Well, they're only going to do, but see, they'll only allow us what actual businesses are there. They seem to tell me that they don't bet on futures. Then I point to twenty miles away at Marcy, and that was entirely future test. So where do you get off in one breath? Now, I'm very happy with Marcy, I'm not knocking that at all, but we had the same thing. We have, we just sold twenty-five acres to somebody we know is manufacturing. They don't care, they don't have the data. We have other people looking on a constant basis, we gave them outlines. We have Kalucci trucking in the front, they don't care, they don't have the data. We sent them to Skyler Wood Pellet because they want to hook up to gas. They don't care, they're not ready for it. So this four inch line, they anticipate it will be enough. If not, they're going to have to bury another line.
But and in that case, are they going to pay for it?
No.
Well, then that's ridiculous to do it twice.
Your expertise in gas is tremendous, okay? If there's, and that, and no disrespect, no disrespect, I'm saying the four, we had this issue at the at the pump catch. They wanted to put a four inch in and what, six?
Six inch.
Six inch. But there were different pressures there. A four inch high-pressure line can handle a lot more than a six-inch low-pressure line, and.
So you believe that four inch sure line, no matter how high it is, will service that other three hundred thousand?
It's a high pressure, we were told at one time, and you may have heard this, some. At a high pressure, four inch high pressure would run a city. And even our legislators said that it works for National Grid. If it's the case, what I would suggest that we do, maybe to the attorneys, is send a letter to National Grid saying we have concerns about the four inch that we're proposing, that any future development that goes in would be, the cost would be more.
They won't do that, Jim.
Then we could go on record saying that.
We have on, we've sent out emails. They have a stack of emails from us all. Tony, they're showing ready to say, okay, yeah, we'll cover it because there's concerns now. I'm just on record.
Sorry, John, had to unmute. Yes, can you hear me?
Can you get an?
You getting audio, John?
That way, at least you you have a comfort either way, four inch, six inch, et cetera.
Well, we cannot stop this from going forward. This has to go in now, or else those other companies won't get it. So you can't fight it now. However, when we when we were fighting this past month, every day, even with Tom Kalucci, who pushed for a six inch, there's two Kalu, two Tom Kaluccis, Tom Kalucci Trucking, who's building a trucking, and Tom Kalucci, who's with National Grid, who's who's retiring at the end of this month, which has really been. So you can, you can ask Tony to submit anything he wants, they're going to tell you that they don't care.
You got your trucks on the phone. When you ask them, point blank, saying, will this handle any, another building the size of?
Tractor supply.
Tractor supply.
He doesn't answer. That's, he goes, you're you're talking futures, we don't talk futures here. I just told you, that's what they do. You are more than welcome to say than any meeting.
No. Why, if you're the customer and you're paying for it, and why can't you just tell me you want a six inch?
We we do that too. I said, look, we're paying for it. We would pay for an eight inch line to bring it in there. That's not the way we work.
We seem to, you know, I remember going back to the pump catch. We thought we learned our lesson because we put all the infrastructure in, and that was just to say, you know, we had to move everything. It was under the building. So we said, let's wait and do it a smarter way, and it still turned it into a.
Dave, we started in May, and we gave them everything in August, and here it is. I called them every week. I mean, they know.
They're they're very unresponsive.
Until I said, we're going over the Public Service Commission, I'm finally getting calls.
Yeah.
Would you know, John, what they did in Marcy?
Oh, that's a, the ten inch line, that's huge. They anticipate, same way with the power. The load of the power isn't even going to take up a third of what they have in place for pre or well speed.
Were these shoes anticipating that future? That's the same thing.
I, but they didn't consider that, John.
The thing is, they come off their ten inch line, and if you loop the ten inch line with a four inch, you're actually feeding it from two different ways, so you quadrupled the value that's given to this. So there may be enough. I I think it's a workforce issue we currently have.
Well, what happened to start with our design person, who they actually called back now to help, he retired. So they went out, they do a bidding process in National Grid, and a person bid it out in Syracuse who only did residential. So this was over their head, but when when that person won the bid, they said, don't worry, we'll support you with help. Well, they haven't, and that poor person was destroyed in one of our meetings, just destroyed because they had no idea.
Can we get the technical stuff on that four inch line from them, say, we want the the pressure, the volume, whatever? And then.
Of course.
Submit it, submit it to a private engineer and say, hey, listen, can this handle?
Well, Delta would be able to tell us.
Let's let's estimate.
But I can't stop this. I cannot stop this. We we cannot.
Might be doing this twice.
We might be doing this twice.
I would send a, go on record, sending a lesson, we have concerns about future development. Just go on record with a nasty grant from Tony.
We did miss the pump catch, we laid the lines, there were no businesses.
Zero.
It was all in the future.
Yeah, well, we didn't do gas when we got on. The only time we got gas over was for Heilberg, and I don't know if you recall, but tractor supply was quite upset with us too because of how much propane they had to use during construction.
They may not give it out for superior reasons, but probably yes. They've been pretty quiet and stuff sometimes.
However, just keep in mind too, this is grant money, and this will be paid back to us December.
We got to move forward.
We have to for this, so we can't. I started and said, no, we were fighting it at the time of design. I I mean, I countless hours. I, I mean, I countless hours with these people. I had to drive, I had to drive the easements. Yeah, we have to pay it for.
So you want a motion to approve to, so we're paying the National Grid and then they sub it out and have some.
No.
Who buries this?
National Grid. Now, this is one of the benefits, or you could say it's a problem. But as we're doing this research, Mr. Hallack found out we've never turned over part of drive-in, all of diamond roads to the town. It's still ours. So the easements were easy in this case for us, thank God, because we already owned everything. But if not, it would have been another layer of attorneys, but that wouldn't have been bad because Skyler wants to make this happen too.
So you, I, I moved that we pay National Grid a hundred and sixty-two thousand, eighty-six dollars and fifty percent. For the gas line into the Skyler business.
A motion to the second. Second. Any discussion further? Don't be right. You opposed name?
No one dislikes them more than I do.
They were reputable in their day when they were few years ago. Now, everything's gone to Syracuse. You know, you said local context and you, now they were good. They were good. They take care of us, but.
They have Massachusetts students, right, John?
Yeah, these people were reaching out to Syracuse. Yeah, well, these ones, and the next level up, we've been sending the emails too. And then finally, we had conference calls and calls and, you know, our guy leaving in two days or a week doesn't help us either. And, and we met Diane, but that over four, I don't, she was mad about over the pumpkin. I can't figure these people out. Um.
This is when you don't have conferences.
Yeah. And they didn't want me to go to the public service because especially before their contract was up. But now I'm probably only chairing state spectrum.
Okay, let's go on, uh, item fifteen, Sunny's Flat Hill. So there's an application for financial assistance. Page thirty-six forty-three.
So this is a twenty megawatt project, a hundred and ninety-five acres, a twenty-two million dollar project for us. Uh, once again, it's by Sunny's. So this will be, is this our third or fourth? There are so many communities, projects, now it's taller on the county. So something that seems to be moving forward. So then would you leave the resolution, you know, voting and finding?
Okay, let's take, uh, I made education itself, the motion to, go ahead. Mike Warren, second.
No, we don't.
Sunny's, second. Any discussion? All right.
All abstained.
Any opposed names? Gary. Uh, item B is the industrial resolution signed with death. We are in the decade. Any comments there? Your motion accept. Dave plus second by. Let's go on, let's speed away, guys. Don't be right. All abstained. They opposed name. Gary. Uh, we need to set a public hearing date on that. Your motion to set a public hearing date and that would be.
Uh, we'll set it after this within two weeks.
Second by Lori. Any discussion? Okay, right.
All right.
Any opposed name? Gary. Item sixteen to go, you heard more than Jordan McDavid.
Yeah. So when we, uh, won with Chuck Malcolm, that rock star, not that long ago. I thought he was dying, but I don't see him. Um, there was a judgment payment, uh, set against the village that we thought we'd never see, uh, four thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars. The other day we received the check from them for that amount. Uh, they had some other business they needed to do, but since we had the lien out there, they couldn't do it. So we got the paper. So they only owe us ninety-nine percent more, but it's better. It's just, uh, there's no action item or anything, just a discussion. No, we already did. It's deposited. We had to send a letter back saying we took it. Uh, we didn't have an option because the judge made it.
All right, our last, uh, regular agenda is, uh, felt that L L T, there's a team of eight on forty-four through forty-seven, questions?
Mr. Hallack is here. If anybody does have any, uh, very fair fees. We reached out and checked with some other agencies to see what there might be, um, any, any fees for that. Uh, comparable, Tony's been good with us, uh, knows his limitation, knows when he needs assistance, reaches out, calls back. I think that the amount that he's charging us is very reasonable. And let's not forget, probably eighty-five to ninety percent of the time, it's, uh, fees that are charged to the client anyways, not to us. So I recommend that we continue his services, um, for how, this is, no, no, for how long?
I didn't see it.
This year. Tony, just this year?
Uh, it's one year and it's renewable. We've always.
Will the raise in your fee get you some better system over there so you can talk to us via Zoom?
It says for the two thousand twenty-two.
Just for twenty twenty-two?
It's got public ransom notes or something.
Okay, uh, any question, any questions there? I need a motion for the second. Hey Ricky, second floor, any discussion? Don't be right. Any opposed name? All right, uh, okay. We have some luckily officials on the phone, uh, in public here. So anyone like, uh, somebody in small, would you like to speak on anything?
Yeah, just one thing. I wanted to make the board aware of.
Is the volume turned up in this place?
Can you, can you hear me now?
Some of them, we cannot hear you. We're probably having some technical difficulties on our end.
Okay, I'm off mute. Can you hear me now? Hold on one second. I'm, uh, I'm still transmitting. I'm showing I'm not on mute. All right, we hear you now. Great, thanks so much. Uh, we just had our first executive budget briefing last night. Uh, I just wanted to keep the board aware of the budgeting process, particularly for the category under economic development. Uh, as I finish the analysis and see where there's potentially, you know, more resources, I'll, I'll input it to the, uh, IDA board and then we can go from there. But, uh, this is a, this is a big year. The budget is two hundred and sixteen billion. Uh, it's, you know, the biggest budget that we've had in New York State ever. Uh, and that includes all the COVID money from the Fed. So it's something to, uh, to analyze and then see what we can do. That's, uh, that's my report. Thanks.
Right, assembly been smaller?
Yes.
My, one of my large disconcerns is what's going on with brownfields. I don't know if you could take a look into that. Uh, now when people do a brownfield program, D E C is demanding a fifty thousand dollar application fee. And the D E C now states that they can remove you from the program at will. I understand that a lot of times the D E C knows the finished creative work while we're doing projects. Due fault, we got them to waive that fee and we would continue to ask for waivers, especially for smaller communities. It's gonna be very hard to get developers that are gonna, because to do an application, it costs them around twenty to thirty. And now a fifty thousand dollar application, you're like that eighty to ninety thousand that they're gonna have to spend to get out of the floor. That's gonna hurt brownfields developing, uh, state and even, I'm very concerned about that.
I, I understand that and I, we will continue to ask for the wave. Uh, they, they increased the Environmental Protection Fund this year. Uh, they also increased the Mother Nature Bond Act from three to four billion. So I, I don't see why they're asking for money and we should continue to, you know, to fight that off so we can do the development.
Well, they talk about how they increased the boa grant money, which is for downtowns really for a brownfield opportunity area assessment grant. And that's fantastic. They've added more rules and regs there too that are gonna cost more in consultant fees. Then they also started Restore New York again, or she tried to, or in the process of, we have no rules on that. So it's hard to comment on that now. But I worry that our state is looking, and the EPA has increased their money in general, and we're hoping to receive other EPA grants. And you know, us smaller communities and counties, we have a lot of brownfields here. So we're very concerned about how we're gonna clean ours up.
Yeah, I, I concur and we'll keep working that through the initiative that Fulton County Center for Regional Growth, uh, put on for the Brownfield Summit. And, uh, we'll make sure that all the electeds on, uh, at, at the federal and at the state level, you know, we can, we can fight this off because this is the, you know, this is where the regulators get to squash stuff. Uh, you know, inadvertently through, uh, you know, making it too expensive for our municipalities. So I hear you. Thank you.
And one last thing too, we're really hoping, she has said how she's in favor of economic development. She did keep the prevailing wage bill still in there. It'd be great if somebody wanted to oppose and try to kick that out. We're gonna see some dramatic changes in upstate New York. Bill to build in New York City expect to pay that, but in upstate New York, we still hire, uh, unions, we'll reach out to unions for bids. Uh, we did that quite heavily when we were upgrading the pump catch and the electricity there. We know that our current builders all reach out to them as well. But they have that in place in upstate New York. It really turned, we already had people pop that out of that too. So whatever you can do for that, people understand what they have to pay in New York City. We understand how tight it is to get employees as well. So we know this is just gonna be another layer of things that's a little different.
I, I definitely hear you on that, John.
Okay. If you want to talk offline, please let me know at the time. I'm happy to do it.
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Some even, thank you very much and keep the fight in the fight.
Thank you. Appreciate you allowing me to listen in.
Morning, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you for allowing me to be here. I'm just gonna shut my door quick, guys. I'm sorry. Thank you for allowing me to be here, guys. It's always great to hear all the wonderful things you guys are, are doing down there. It really blows my mind. Um, I wanted to kind of go on record with something I really can't go too much on record with just yet. Um, but the college got a small grant, approximately fifty thousand dollars, um, through, um, SUNY. Um, the parameters were to, it had to be training, workforce development training that had to be delivered online. It had to be, um, in an emergent, in a emerging industry in our region. And it also had to be an industry that was impacted by COVID. So the college has a supply chain management program. So, um, and what a wonderful time to have that and what better industry unfortunately that fits that bill, right? With Amazon coming, with Tractor here and, and, and all that work that's been done. It really is the, the right grant at the right time that we feel, um, we feel that way anyway. Um, we're gonna be issuing a micro credential, okay? And, because it has to be short-term training relatively, can't exceed fifteen weeks. So, um, the students or the potential, uh, trainees will go through, um, a hundred and eighty hours worth of training, uh, covering the subject of supply chain management, inventory control and warehouse management, transportation management and organizational behavior. I can't, once we get, um, the official contract, then we can do press releases and such. They asked us not to do that. Um, but, you know, we're among friends here. So once that happens, we're gonna go out and hit the road. We're gonna talk to people, John. I'm gonna definitely want to come down and talk to you. Um, I have a meeting with Karen Peasek in Herkimer County Employment Training Thursday to talk to her about this. I'm gonna need her assistance to help me reach, um, potential trainees. It's, um, it's really exciting. I did have a conversation with Tractor last week, um, and H A R C the week before, kind of feeling them out. I'm gonna need some guidance from them, um, to make sure that where I envision this going is gonna meet their needs. Um, Tractor, um, I think it was fair to say was excited. Um, this would give, uh, potential employees not only a leg up to get it an entry level position, but they have like a supervisor and training program that they think in, you know what I mean, that's people who came in, if they had the right stuff, would, would be eligible for that. So very excited about that. It's gonna kick off this fall, um, with, um, our first cohort. And it's gonna be delivered at no charge to the participants. Books, everything.
We'll be happy to talk to you, Bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much, John. You're, you're next on my list. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Bill. Uh, we've covered all the guests, so let's go on to price updates, John.
Sure. I'll be attending, uh, the New York State Economic Development Council, the twenty, uh, through March one down in Albany. I'll give everybody an update after that. We had an excellent meeting and the Eastern Mohawk Valley Water Against Mission line, a map of it's against the wall over there. We had Delta involved in this time, at this meeting, Tony Hallack, Lee Ann West. Uh, right now we have a couple million in place for the pipe. Uh, we locked in a price for this year, for the whole year. So we went towards grant to buy that. Uh, the design, we're going to the fourth phase of that. So we're reaching out to part of the state to further our grant there. And then we'll start going to E D F and CIA or the Health Department, a whole many, a whole bunch of other ones. We think there's at least ten million from the state board to come onto that line. So we're excited about moving ahead with that. Jim was involved in the meeting as well. Our, uh, Herkimer County Food Process Study, myself and Victoria have an updated meeting Thursday with a consultant. Uh, we've been in touch with Burn Dairy, uh, Cornell, a couple other manufacturers. Uh, we're looking at all different types of processes and that's moving along. Our building of, uh, Dallesville Boa, um, the public outreach meeting is, you know, February seventeenth at six P M. Where, where is that?
At the school.
At the school, okay. So that'll be an important meeting. Whoever can make that, we really would appreciate. Uh, this is our first boa. Our consultants are, are very good in that area and we'd like to see some, uh, big things happen there. Our New York State Controller Office, they're finally not coming to our building anymore, which is fantastic. But, uh, they probably said we won't see any results for a couple of months, which is fine. They, they're backed up, but I just, that's just amazing to me. Uh, we're doing our annual financial audit. They ask for four or five things every day, but that's moving ahead. We're doing that with Bowers again. It's been great. We had an original kickoff meeting, um, just so many things that are helping us, like other areas that we're listing. Um, just, just way advanced, uh, firm and we're happy to be working with them. And, and they're not afraid to ask questions and they help guide us on how to get the answers. So that's moving ahead. Really nice. Uh, A B O training, uh, a couple of you, I believe, uh, don't want to mention any names because then it makes people feel bad. But a couple of you need the training again and Victoria will be reaching out to you. Some of you haven't taken it in a year and really need to. If not, we have a plaque and thank you very much, but, uh, just we'll move on with that. Our new employee starting February seventh as his masters in marketing, uh, we're excited about that. Had a great interview, uh, really eager, a Herkimer County kid, so we're eager to get him moving. Uh, one last thing or two last things. We have to start talking about cannabis soon. Uh, we're starting to get a few calls. I'd like to know, yeah, both the talks on afternoon with some brownies and stuff. But, uh, we're, we're, we're worried about which way to go. I, I would like some direction from the board. I don't want to encourage anything or, or not. If the board says no, we're really not interested because I'll listen to what y'all have to say. From what we've seen of the projects are big projects, little jobs. So, you know, it's like any other growing business, so, you know.
Is that a county decision?
Not to grow.
To the municipalities, to us.
Our municipality can have it or not.
But that's only to sell it. That's not to grow it in this type of agricultural building structure. Those are not. Yeah. Well, they're not gonna do the same at that facility. This will be growing process and shipping it out. So we do have people interested in that, but maybe the next meeting we'll have some discussion and I can get just all some further data on that to, so we know where we're at. That app, yes. Mark down, Mr. Hollander, question samples. Mark down, Mr. Hollander question samples.
I have some things that I can.
Oh, good. Why do you think it's good or no, or what do you think?
I'm just saying, uh, the, any, any federal, uh, font as an example, you know, with our N P S. That's our funding comes from the, we can't, we can't administer any projects with, with the groweries that, that are tied to federal.
So no C D B G, but there, there's different ways to work with that, but, you know, I've experienced a couple of projects.
I just that, my wife comes from a rural county in Michigan, and they're, they're going out buying homes. And then you gotta put a lot of power and water, and they just make, and then they just leave the home and. It's municipality or the county's problem, or these derelict houses after, but, you know, the moisture that went through these homes.
They get overgrown, right? They're, they're looking a big old greenhouse. Maybe not.
Put them in these houses and suck all the money out of it, and then say.
You had to invest considerable.
We don't need more.
Three quarters of a million dollars to become a grower, while permitting, so it's not just say anybody, you know, starts a.
You're not processing, you know.
I'm sure when it gets to that point, we'll have legal opinion and.
You know, Colorado is on fire with it, there's a company out of Schenectady that makes a, uh, a process that helps, uh, process the pot, so they're. They're really booming, I mean, so it's hard to say, but Mr. Bono doesn't like.
I don't really see the true long-term, you know.
I'm happy to tell them we're just not interested too, but I'd like everyone's opinion, so we'll get some more data for next time, but I just wanted to bring it up, it's fiscal hot. The last thing I have before we go on executive session over, uh, some, uh, personnel and some, uh, properties. Um, DOT sent us a letter reference to Skylar. We had a meeting there with DOT. Now, I gotta say, Assemblyman Smalling was there, and so was, uh, Senator Oberrocker. Boy, it's, it's probably was Bay or Acre or something like that. And, uh, they said that they were gonna send us a letter on a bunch of requests that they had. Well, we got a letter, the actual, the town gets the letter, and states that they want to know how many vehicles will be going in and out of that facility a day. And we have no idea, out of that part of them. We have new numbers from what we have, but we can't see into the future. Delta on their staff has the retired regional five, the same, uh, title that our regional director has. So he put the letter together, we sent it out to them, and we're waiting for a reply. But we really don't see a justification on what they're trying to do.
I, I have a question, someone from the town called me the other day about this, and, and they said that the drive-in road is owned by the town Skylar, is that true?
Drive-in road, part of it.
So why is it our problem?
Well, we're working in conjunction.
Shouldn't the town Skylar handle, do the study and do a.
No, no, nobody really, it's a recommendation from DOT, but you need more data, Kate, they're not giving us.
I look at it this way, it's not our problem, we don't own the road.
Uh, it's our problem, because it's our park, and if we can't populate the park and they keep pushing back on what numbers, we have no, what numbers can we give them on?
Well, the person who called me, they're pushing for, uh, uh, traffic, like, you know, a team with a traffic light.
Their expertise is.
None, but well, that's what I, but, but, uh, you know, that's what I.
Well, let the town approach them for a light, and I told them at their meeting, they're more than welcome to do that. However, when they ask that data, they don't have the resources to come to the park and say what's going in there. We can supply them with, give us more specifics, DOT, and that's why it's us.
I don't think there's been an accident, I've been on the fire car in thirty-five years, and even not being there, I don't ever remember there being an accident. There was one on the bridge, but it was a. Icy bridge, the, uh, the school bus, I think. It had nothing to do with the entrance to the park, if you, in my opinion, expert opinion, or unexpert opinion, is, uh, their interchange there is conducive for. Trucks to turn, you're already at a forty-five, half the turn is already, if you put a T there with a light, somebody blows by the light, and there's. If you're coming from the east over the bridge.
You don't have a lot.
Two hundred yards, there's plenty of, I, you know, or a line of, sorry, plenty. And coming from the other way, it's wide open, so, um, to, to do any type of, of study that the DOT wants, there were thou, you know, five, six hundred cars there. Going out there driving, no accidents.
The Russian church is worse. With the traffic on Route Five, however, we did a traffic study, uh, amount of traffic, we found fifty-six hundred cars a day. Most of the people in that park right now will leave before seven in the morning. Happens comes in, they, their trucks are loaded overnight, and they go. Fountainhead will have a few trucks in and out, some of our other ones might be a little bit more. But so what, there's no, they're not giving us any reason other than they wanna pass us.
The sand park was two miles up the road, and Diamond Drive went two miles up, that was the only outlet, would be the DOT wanna traffic study. Probably not, because it's out of sight, because it's right there in proximity, they. It's a different traffic spec.
Did they do this to us, coming out on Haiti?
No.
And there's a lot more people.
Well, they, they were questioned for five S, but they expanded our ramps for us. I mean.
And that's a lot, that's a lot of truck storming out of there.
Six hundred a day?
I guess they wanna know, um, exactly where, um, their requirements are outlined to shift the burden on to the IDA. To monitor and provide those studies.
That was in our letter. Say we need.
To request that, so I'm sure Tony's completed their letter, and, you know, I, I just, I guess I want to see where somewhere. Where it states that, you know, the developing party is.
And that's why Delta has the same individual that we have here, and sent back to her and said, you know, where, where are you, this means nothing.
They have a regional, uh, retired regional that.
Right, so we're gonna try to.
Well, we, we wanna know, they came to our meeting and they stumbled because they had no answers, but we had the gentleman there from Delta that day, he was where you come. So now it's come up again, because we believe everything's paid off at the park, everything's light open now, and, uh, we're seeing some different things.
Do you think this is going to result in a sort of attorney?
Well, they, they can only recommend DOT, they can't force, they're not a forcing agency for this, they can't stop anything. They're requesting, now, would we love for them to come in and say, okay, guys, we've determined by the road traffic and what we see, we're gonna put a light there, that's your light then. You know, would we stop that?
We would have to pay for the light, and that's what it works, it was one work.
We'd be figuring, Skylar would figure it out.
Even the flashing lights, the county can look at it on top of, who built, we're just, they're tough to maintain.
We'll probably get a sign though, prior to on both sides, say industrial park coming, or entrance, sorry, yeah, something, I'm not that side back.
All right, let's, uh, have motion on executive session.
Public hearing we need to close.
Oh, oh, yeah, oh, wow, I should have closed a while, anything else on the, uh, public hearing for Nathan Gilinsky apartments? Hearing nothing, I closed the public hearing at, uh, nine oh one. So they got an extra half hour. Only if it's about Nathan Gilinsky apartment. Doesn't it sound like a hot dog?
If you heard anything or maybe it told you on Kmart building hall, can I ask that person?
Uh, no, it's Wouldn't Fall Under Us, it's retail.
No, I, I know.
Right now, it's in front of the, uh, uh, planning board of the village, because he wants to subdivide the lots in front for four. And then have something else in the building, but to subdivide, he had. And there would be nothing there that we could support now unless it became something quite unique. I think Wendy's is going there, that's the rumor we're starting here today, Wendy's and Sonic's. Yeah, those are.
Oh, wow, that's, that's recording.
Okay, let's go to executive session to talk about, uh. Property and personnel, I need a motion.
They all did, everybody did.
Serrano and Yan for, uh, executive session.